Our first item on the agenda tonight is picking up where we left off last time. Woo! With our Climate Action Plan Review. Matty Cheek will lead the discussion along with our consultants. Welcome.
Hello, Mayor and Council. Everyone looks so nice. All right. My name is Matty Cheek. I'm a management analyst with the city. And I'll let Nick introduce himself.
Nick Westendorf, Deputy Public Works Director.
Awesome. We're here tonight to, like the mayor said, finish where we left off last time and talk about the mitigation actions in the Climate Action Plan. I'm going to start the timer on my phone really quick so we don't go over. So give me just a second here. Sorry.
It counts, it counts.
I know. I'm already in the negative, huh? Okay. So, yeah, we'll go over the mitigation actions, also known as the emissions reduction actions in the draft plan. Tonight we'll cover the strategies and some of the draft actions in there. We'll share what we know about relative cost and emissions reduction potential for the different strategies. And then we'll also hear about what we heard in the most recent online open house. Oop, I have to point at this one, huh?
Is it on?
Is it on?
Where's the actual thing?
Please turn off red. Okay. Off, on.
Oh, the light's on.
Not sure.
Bate, can we have the next slide?
Oh, it's already missed.
Matty, you want me to mess with it?
Yeah, please.
Need some good hold music.
Do they all have their hand up already?
Yes. Okay. We're joined by our consultant team again tonight. So to my left is Josh Proudfoot, the Director of Climate and ESG at Good Company, which recently became a division of Parametrics. And I should explain what that is because I didn't last time. Parametrics is a civil engineering and environmental science firm, yes, based in the Puget Sound region up in Washington. And then to my right is Jess Pickle. She's the Executive Officer and Senior Program Manager at JLA Public Involvement. We're really thrilled to have them here to help us tell the story of the draft plan, what's in it, and why it's there. Okay, quick overview. I'm going to cover a tiny bit of background information, just to level set a little bit before we get into it. Josh is going to talk about our emissions reduction goal, our community-wide inventory results, and our emissions forecast. And then we'll dig into the strategies and actions by focus area, which is kind of the meat of the presentation again. And then we'll have time for Q and A. So again, just a couple logistical things. We'll have about 45 minutes of presentation, 40 minutes for Q and A. If folks could hold their questions till the end, just like last time, that would be much appreciated. And the slide numbers are on the bottom right-hand corner of the screen. It looks like it's obscured by the video, unfortunately. But if you have a slide in particular you want to go back and reference, we can flip back to that later. Next slide. So there's a large range of types of actions in the plan. They range from totally community-led and community-driven to kind of bigger policy decisions. There's three city roles that we've identified, kind of moving from most involved at the city level to least from left to right. So implement, convene, and support advocate. And then I want to highlight again the policy decision icon. This just indicates actions that would require another larger and more in-depth conversation with council to just kind of reiterate that this isn't a regulatory document, and many of these things would come back before you all to handle or hammer out some of those details that we know matter so much. So. Last piece on this slide, a little bit different from last time. I nixed those really awful slides with all the text on them because they weren't really helping us. So we're just going to keep it at a little bit of a higher level and talk about strategies and action types. And then we're happy to dig into specific actions during the Q and A if that's helpful to you all. So I hope that folks have had a chance to review the document, and please do bring the specific questions forward if you have them. All right, next slide. So just a quick kind of zoom out here before we do dive in. On the left is that triangle that shows kind of how the plan is structured, going from broad to more specific. Today, we're hanging out in the Section 3 area, also known as reducing emissions. We've got four different focus areas under that section, and then a variety of strategies within that. We've got 10 strategies that we've analyzed in terms of emissions reduction potential and cost. And so if you can look at the little bars there with the leaf in the middle, that's showing emissions reduction potential from low to high, high being kind of most ideal from an emissions reduction standpoint. And then below that is cost. So on the far left in the three green dollar signs, that indicates significant savings. And then kind of moving to the right, cost neutral, and then more significant costs for each strategy. So just want to orient folks to that. And I think with that, I will hand it over to Jess.
Hi, everyone. Can you hear me okay? It's really nice to see you again. So two weeks ago, I was able to give you a little bit of a snapshot on some of the things that we were hearing from the public from the most recent online open house. So just a reminder, that online open house was open from the middle of October through early November, and we heard from 328 people in that portion of time. And tonight, I'm going to, through certain points in the presentation, just give you a little bit more feedback on what we're hearing from the public, as well as some things that we probably need a little bit more discussion with folks on. I would say that generally, most people are really positive. And we'll get into that more tonight, but most comments showed a lot of support for the things that were included in the Climate Action Plan. But as I just kind of alluded to, there's some sticky topics that we're going to probably need to dig in more with the public. And, yeah, so I'll share that as we go along.
Back to you, Matty. Yeah, and I think, next slide, and Josh is next on the emissions goal. There we go.
Okay. So howdy, everybody, again. Thank you for that TV. That's merciful for our necks. Net zero by 2050. So that means even if you have emissions, you've offset them by 2050, and you're at zero. You're neutral. Even if you're a little bit above, you're going to offset that. That is the world's goal. At Paris Accord, it was originally 2 degrees, and then the scientists, over five years, came back and said, that's actually, we're not going to make it. That's what's known as the guardrail goal. So it got moved to 2050, zero by 2050. So now that is the international standard. It's being adopted in most states and most cities and most counties. Next slide, please. All right. So here is something really important to look at. This is the community's emissions. On the left, the local emissions are the ones that would be produced here or be produced by the electricity production. On the right, you have the imported emissions. So all the food we eat, all the goods we buy, all the things we bring into our homes or offices or workplaces are on the right. And you can see that there's a pretty substantial set of bar graphs there, but those aren't under direct control, right? The other ones are closer to under direct control. So first, you'll notice that giant blue bar on the left. That is building energy. So that's ultimately natural gas and electricity. And because you have a lot of industry, light industry and commerce in town, that's a pretty big bar. We see that in a few communities, but not as many and as tall. But I think you know your economic base, and you can figure out why it would be there. Transportation energy. We did check to make sure it's not all people pulling off I-5, getting gas, and then leaving. That was the obvious question. We benchmarked it to Washington County and Clackamas County's inventories, and on a per-person basis, it's really close. So we're confident of that, even with the proximity to I-5. We have seen in Lane County a much bigger bar, but that was for diesel, and that's because there's kind of a junction going east-west there as well, Highway 58 and 126. If you look at waste disposal, you'll see that's very small. Now, people talk about garbage all the time. It's one of the things we know recycling is important, but most of the stuff that goes into the landfill, unless it's what's called a putrescible, which you can imagine what it smells like, the organics, it doesn't make emissions. Plastics, when they're buried, don't make emissions. Metals, wood, not really making emissions. So solid waste emissions are kind of small. That doesn't mean that the materials that are energy-intensive, like glass or metal or wood or cardboard, aren't worth recovering. Those really are worth recovering. But sitting in the landfill, they're not making a bigger problem. They're just using space. And then industrial processes and emissions, that is an estimate. That is generally proprietary data. It's very hard to get a hold of. And the only time you see large process emissions outside of kind of the Oregon-wide inventory prorated to your population is when there's so much emissions that they have to report it or they have a special permit for it. So for example, a styrofoam factory will have a lot of volatile gases that will release in the process. And it's not about burning anything. It's not about heat. It's about these gases that are highly volatile that escape into the atmosphere. So in your community, there aren't any single sources that are so large that have that kind of emission that they're visible in the reporting or permitting world. On the right, again, those goods production, food production, fuel production, and air travel, all of those are estimated based on demographics and population. So we can't get a hard count. We actually tried to get a hard count through a DEQ grant in Eugene once, and we realized that the data is so thin, it's nearly impossible. I think someday, if everybody's comfortable, Amazon will have the best answers for us on that one. Okay, next slide, please. Emissions forecast. All right. So there's some good news in here, and then there's some more news in here. That red line at the top going up and up and up is where we were before our cap and invest rule came in. So what you're seeing is the result of major legislation that regulates utilities and fuel providers at the state. And that was as of 18 months ago, that's where we're all headed. The 2050 goal is that dotted black line. And then you see the building energy, which is electricity. Sorry, I got to look over here for the prompt. Waste is very, very thin. Transportation energy is still a wedge, but I want to say there's been good news since, which is what's called the Advanced Clean Car Rule 2, which is being adopted in many states, which says by 2035, you may not sell any internal combustion vehicle for personal use. So it's 10% a year, and it starts in 2025. We're actually at 18% sales of EVs in the state organically without the regulations arriving. So on that front, we're ahead of the curve, but we're not bumping into things. So this begs the question, hey, if those two regulations are going to get us most of the way, why are we even doing anything? And the answer is, that transition, albeit regulated, may be very uncomfortable because it's a million small changes. So when you go from a gas dryer to an electric dryer, you're pulling in a new service line, and you're disconnecting an old line. When you switch to an EV charger, you may just triple-charge overnight for your 40 miles with a three-prong plug, or you might say, I want it to go faster. And so you have to do some electrical panel work in your garage, right? There are so many of those things in this energy transition that will endure for such a long time that if we don't support it, the laws will be there, but they won't be met. The goals will not be met. So that's the biggest takeaway, is we really need to switch into this mindset of implementation, not just regulation. The big regulations have been set for our state. The rest, we just got to support it so it works out economically and comfortably. Next slide. Okay. So this commercial bar in the middle looks daunting, but actually, there's two things going on in there. There's what's considered light commercial, which is traditional retail, and there's what a lot of folks might call light industrial, which the utility calls commercial. So that bar is probably most of the production facilities in the community and the retail. And then what's listed as industrial is actually heavy industrial. And inside of that are two facilities that are so large, they procure their power on their own. They have the legal title to do so. Outside of PGE, and they just pay PGE to push it through the lines. So you'll notice that the big bar, again, is the dark one, and that's electricity production. And in many communities, for residential, you'd see a much bigger gas signature, but here, it's about 50/50, natural gas and electricity. So over time, as that decarbonizes, the electricity part takes care of itself in other places where it's generated, but the gas won't take care of itself. There's some regulations on that that should step down, but whether that can be met or not is still to be determined. Okay, next slide, please. Jess?
Okay. So with the most recent online open house, we showed fairly good support for the strategies that were included in the Buildings and Energy section. As you can see, we had 53% of the participants showed support for those strategies. But I think it's also worth noting that almost half also said that they have concerns or questions and, you know, concerns. So I would say that of those that, and by the way, my notes are on my phone. I am not checking my email right now. Of those who showed support, many were really excited to share that they've already implemented some of those strategies on their own personal buildings and homes, and that they're seeing a lot of success from it. That said, we also got a lot of comments that just that we're having, we're starting to have a growing reliance on electricity and fears that our grid won't be able to keep up with that demand. And so with that, there was definitely, the comments showed support for a mix of energy sources, including natural gas. And now that I brought up natural gas, it's just worth noting that that was by far the number-one concern that came up in this area, was just the general fear of a ban against natural gas. The reasons for that are that some indicated that natural gas is, can't be more reliable than electricity, and it's nice to have it in their homes. Others felt like upgrading or changing things to move more towards electricity from natural gas might actually cost a lot of money, which would burden homeowners and people who can't afford those changes.
Thank you.
Next.
All right, next slide, please. Okay. So this strategy is familiar probably to everyone, bless you. Going with more energy-efficient appliances, supporting weatherization in older homes, and adopting the REACH code, which will be non-ReACH code in 2028, are some of the ways that you can get to a much lower burden for energy of any type. And whether you're mostly a gas-heated household or an electricity-heated household, there are a ton of incentives, sorry, I shouldn't use the word "ton." There are many incentives to reduce costs, and just better appliances is a big part of it. I do want to say that it's heating of space and heating of water where most of the energy in a home goes, if you don't have an EV. If you have an EV, then that's another substantial load. Okay. Next slide, please. Carbon-free electricity supply. So PGE is a very friendly actor with communities, and they've worked hard to adopt a Green Futures program, where they're bringing green power to the whole community in advance of the regulatory mandates. Hillsboro was successful in negotiating a very lucrative solar contract. And this is part of what folks don't know, but at the utility scale, solar with storage is now cheaper than natural gas power. Both LA Department of Water and Power and Florida Power and Light, in their last procurements of thousands and thousands of megawatts of power, like whole-city-scale power, they came in lower cost with storage, battery storage, than gas turbines. And that's a surprise to everyone, but we're at that point where that technology scaled up, where maybe not at the household level, but at the utility level, it's actually cheaper. So they're going to migrate this way anyway, and the Inflation Reduction Act has lots of incentives for power generators to move that way. That said, they will move quicker in places where the community asks for it. Not every community's asking for it. This is something that can be done, and it's coming out cheaper than traditional power. So that's an option. Also, rooftop solar is fantastic, if it can be afforded, if you have a tax credit, if you have the need for a tax credit. The incentives, again, there are very good. It's not for everybody. But in California, with less than 10% penetration of rooftop solar, they've reduced the peak demand in the middle of the day, about 1:45 in the afternoon, to a trough, because there's so much power being generated during the day when the sun's out at its peak, which is also when normally we're consuming the most, that it's inverted. And so now there's two little bumps, and then what's called the duck-back curve. So solar is proven to match up with the daily loads. So even though it's intermittent, it's really well-timed intermittent. Next slide, please. Renewable natural gas and clean hydrogen supply. So this is Northwest Natural's job by regulatory mandate. They have an aggressive green gas group that is working very hard to source as much biogas from things like wastewater treatment plants and dairy manure lagoons, which are both great things. You don't want to waste that energy that's there. And they're looking at producing hydrogen. Now, a few things about this. All of those are good and low-carbon. There's limited scale with the renewable natural gas, so requesting it in the community as a kind of opt-out. If you don't want, you can opt-out if you don't want to. Otherwise, you can opt-in. And also encouraging their growth and use of hydrogen is something you should support. There's a point where the hydrogen, even though it can be produced at scale, can't be blended in the existing system. So I think what you're going to see is that hydrogen going direct into industrial applications on-site, and then we're going to see a dramatic decrease in gas use. And that's how, with energy efficiency, they'll be able to meet this decarbonization mandate. It's a great thing. Encourage clean hydrogen and biogas. And if you can work something with Northwest Natural, the way PGE works with communities, that would be great. Next slide, please. Here's that space in water heating. Ductless heat pumps, electric hot-water heaters, but now heat pump hot-water heaters are really the standard for best efficiency. The ductless heat pumps, the ones without blowing air through the tubes, can go down to very low temperatures. We just had that cold snap in the 20s. The ductless heat pump kept up with it just fine, but the ducted ones go to about 30 degrees. So those might need a boost, whether that's from gas or electricity. A ducted heat pump won't go quite to the cold temps, but it also provides the cooling. And what we're seeing over time is the wintertime load, peak load, is fading out, and the summertime peak load is growing. So we've got this transition from, hey, we need a lot of heat, to, hey, we need less heat and we need more cooling, and eventually, it'll be a lot of cooling and a little bit of heat. But that transition is well-served by a heat pump, because it's there for you on the hot day, and it's there for you on the cold day. Next slide, please. Okay. Now, here's the really big deal. If you're in a new building, and that building is, four units are up, almost guaranteed it's all-electric, maybe gas in a pool, maybe gas in an entryway, but from the permits in many cities, we can see that the bigger the housing unit is, the more likely it is to be all-electric. The challenge is in the existing building stock. It's the retrofits. So same solutions. It's just when something fails, you want to encourage at that moment, hey, I need a new furnace. Maybe you want a heat pump instead. Or, hey, I need a new water heater. Maybe you want to look at an electric water heater. There's panel upgrades that are going to happen. There's all kinds of incremental tiny things, but ultimately, that's what we need to do. We don't need to force everybody to immediately shut down what they have and start up something new. We just need to be proactive and get to folks, so when that moment arrives, they can act on it. Next slide, please. Voluntary purchase of verified carbon offsets. Okay. People ask all the time, I hear offsets are BS. Well, the answer is, sometimes they are, and sometimes they aren't. And the verified ones are the ones that you want to get, and there's lots of local providers that do this well, and it's affordable when you can't make that transition. When you absolutely can't do it, or you don't want to do it because you just bought that thing already, this is a great answer. I'll tell you, from Bonneville Environmental Foundation, these are very affordable and in bulk. They can be a very low cost compared to if you buy them retail. City of Eugene buys these for their operations. They bought a forestry package. I think they pay $7 a ton. The industry average is around $20 a ton. This is what you do when you can't force that transition, when you need to be patient with the equipment you have, when you don't want to throw something out that's brand-new. Next slide, please. All right. Jess? Does this head to you?
Well, do you want to give an intro on this strategy area?
Sure. So with urban form and land use, there's a couple of things to keep in mind here when we're talking about emissions. One is losing trees and breaking soil. The other one is more efficient life. And more efficient life means you can get to the things you need without having to drive real far. And what you see in those denser environments is more walkability, assuming that somebody's not changing jobs many times and have to travel far away after they got their compact life together. But if you're going to the coffee shop, you're walking to the coffee shop or taking a bike. It's those kinds of things. But that land use also is, hey, we really don't want to lose the canopy. We really don't want to lose the green space if that's possible. So that's why you try and encourage denser development in urban areas and more urbanized areas. Next slide.
So that brings us to the comments that we received through the online open house. As you can see by the chart on the screen, we received a higher level of support for the strategies included in this focus area at about 61%. But we still have about a third that said that they don't support it or they have questions and concerns. Overall, we saw a lot of support for more trees. That said, homeowners would like the ability to take down a tree on their own property as needed, and... Homeowners would like the ability to take down a tree on their own property as needed and. I think I mentioned it a couple of weeks ago that we heard that some developments that have happened in the city recently have removed some trees. So just like a general thought of like, let's balance development with our trees. We also saw. A high amount of support through comments in improving walkability, especially for kids. The most common concern was over density. So I think that this is an area where it still kind of remains up in the air for what density means in Tuolumne. All the comments that we received, it seemed, we received comments related to how dense doesn't always mean walkable or pleasant. There were some health related concerns. Some people expressed that it density might mean that it's too populated and people just generally don't want it to feel like Portland. Or even just like sentiment that people have moved to Tuolumne because they like the way it feels today. And if the city considers densifying, we need a transportation system that will support it. So this is the hot topic, this is another area that probably warrants a lot more public conversation.
Thank you. So on the left is a picture of a lovely cafe in Eugene that's a converted house. That not too long ago was a house and now it's a major destination for that neighborhood. Folks going there all day long to get coffee or tea or meetup. And that's the kind of retrofitting you could expect and probably support. In a neighborhood that's sleepy and shady, right? No one likes the idea of taking the elbow room and taking the shade away. We do have a state law now that four units can be developed on a single family neighborhood. So there's a state law that says that, but again, that's four units, that's the max density. So when you're talking about density, really. You're talking about not being in a neighborhood like that, you're talking about being in more of a city center. And you're talking about making something that's taller for folks that want to come in and have that life. And so it's not tearing out the old neighborhoods and building tall so much as find the places where tall makes sense. All right, next slide, please. The forestry and carbon sequestration. So cutting down trees is, you know, as Jess mentioned, always a controversial thing. Generally, we don't want to lose the canopy. Sometimes it might be a fire or a safety issue. Sometimes it might be aesthetics. But generally, the older the tree, the more it's likely to survive changing conditions. There's also something important about that is if you have a shadier place. It keeps the whole area cool and you don't need to turn on the AC as much. And what's great is if it's deciduous tree canopy, then in the winter. The light comes through and it heats the buildings. So it's actually really useful as a thermal mitigator for buildings and for people on the street. And you really don't want to lose it if you can avoid it. So being thoughtful about trees is important. Yes, trees do sequester carbon dioxide. But more likely in an urban environment, they're keeping things cool and keeping the energy bills down. And that's probably its biggest carbon effect. It's hard to imagine, but the data supports that. Next slide, please. Okay. So if you look at A, that's fuel sold in city limits. And it fits almost the state and national average perfectly, like a three to one ratio of gasoline to diesel. So personal vehicles and small vehicles are most of the emissions. Diesel also has more toxics with it and it's usually attached to important tasks. So that conversion is going to happen a little bit later, the passenger cars are moving already. The rules are being formed in Oregon for the diesel and the heavy duty vehicles. But we don't have the technology deployed as far as we need it for today. For the real heavy duty purposes. California is forcing that transition. It will come because of California. Now, if you look at it from the what do we import or what do we use as well. The people in the community given income levels and travel behavior of different income levels. Probably about a quarter of the emissions are in air travel. So it's a unique way of looking at it. But they're switching fuels to EVs, switching ultimately from diesel to hydrogen or renewable diesel. And then there's less air travel. I believe air travel will have the last of the liquid fuels. There are multiple plants trying to make just jet fuel. I think someday that'll be the last kind of horizon for liquid fuels. Next slide, please.
Okay. So similar level of support for this focus area, we had sixty-one percent of the participants from the online open house show support. We also had about a third that said that they either don't support it or they have questions and concerns. There were a lot of comments that showed support for more bike lanes, more sidewalks and more transit, but with some conditions. Support for bike lanes that feel safe. Bus stops need more protection, like we talked about last, the last presentation. And just shorter wait times for frequent transit routes. Mixed feedback on EVs. So we saw some folks that were really, a lot of the comments showed a lot of support and like desire for more incentives for both. Private charging and having more charging stations in public spaces. But there's also a lot of comments that express that EVs are for the wealthy. And so they don't feel approachable for most residents in the city. And also I just want to like share, I know that you're updating your TSP right now. So this is probably something that you're talking a lot with the community about. But there was just a general feeling that the city is trying to get people out of their car. And people want options. So I think that, you know, like based on the comments I saw, like I said, tons of support for sidewalks, transit, bike lanes. But they also want the ability to drive.
All right. So this one, I think we've, or I've talked about already. Renewable diesel is something that's accessible around here. Portland has passed a law saying all outlets will provide that by a certain point. Most cities that we work with are saying, how can we get our fleet onto it? It's better for the fleet operators, it burns cleaner, not perfectly clean, but it burns cleaner. So the folks that are actually in the yellow vehicles or white vehicles all day. Their exposure level will come down and the neighbors will too. This is, this is mixed, it depends on what vehicle you're trying to switch to. So it could be very cost effective, or it could be expensive if you go prematurely and try and jump into. A vehicle class that maybe the technology is not mature on. Next slide, please. Active transportation, okay. This is great, especially in a community that has so much green. People love getting out when they can and the weather's good. We do see from transportation data that electric bikes. Are really starting to take off in a way that we didn't think they would. Especially in urban settings with big hills. It does make it easier to get up the hill. So there's a lot of debate about whether electric bikes belong in bike lanes or not. But we do know they're getting used by folks that typically don't ride bikes, typically don't walk. So it is a cool thing that you'll see more and more of. Very many ways to approach this, but again, this kind of thing gets better and better as the network gets developed. And as they're safer and safer. I will say I was a lifelong bike commuter and as soon as I had children on that bike, I had a completely different perception of safety. So talk to the parents that are moving their kids and they'll have one idea. Talk to the people in their twenties when they're feeling brave on the bike and it's totally different. Next slide, please. Transit, okay. This one's really big and given that you have concentrated workforces. And large employers and medium sized employers. We think there's a lot of potential here to engage TriMet. And say, we have latent demand, we would like to be served. And we'd like to be served at these places that generate so many trips. Not, hey, this one corridor, not enough people live along, right? So it's got to reframe the conversation towards, we're a major employment center and. You know, a residential community, but the employment center should speak loudly. And I would think that your employers would be interested in this over time. As that evolves, it tends to, it tends to get used more and more. It's one of those things where you can't use it if it's not there. And if you've been up in the Seattle area, all the major tech employers have their own, like their own kind of bus lines. Because they weren't going to wait. They just saw the number of vehicles and it was actually stressing out their systems where they'd have to acquire more property. And the cost of that was higher than buying vehicles and getting people to work. Next slide, please. Remote work and flexible work schedules. So we did see during COVID, a dramatic reduction in vehicle miles traveled. That is for office workers. For folks that still have to show up. They don't have that luxury. But a four-ten schedule can sometimes provide that level of comfort for having that time at home. But also a little more compact work life. And I don't know about other folks, but a ten hour day, eight hour day, you're still showing up. It feels a little bit more comfortable to do four-tens and have a three day weekend than five-eights. Something to consider, it's getting debated in a lot of the workplaces. And the equity piece about, hey, I'm not a professional, so where's my, you know, joy in not commuting? Really is in that shorter work schedule, that's what we've seen evolve. Consumption food and goods, there's a lot to do here. This is a personal responsibility and education challenge. There's so much going on here. I'd say, and you can't see it completely in here. But the building of houses is a big part, but you start looking at all the other things and you realize, oh boy, it's everything. So any kind of support for repair shops, really important. Those are kind of hard to find these days, but for a few things. You know how there's storefront matching grants? We've seen some things like that in, I think it was Denver where they're supporting repair shops. The COW, even though I participate in the COW, I'll say that there's big room for change there. There's a world of difference between grass fed and non-grass fed. And there's a big difference if you eat all plants versus if you eat any meat or dairy. Again, lots of personal choice in there, lots of individual cultural things in there too. But ultimately, this half of the emissions is about education and awareness. Cause it, again, until we let everything happen through Amazon. There's no way to manage this successfully, except at the household level. Next slide, please.
As soon as you started talking about food, my stomach started to growl like on cue. Okay, so this focus area received the highest level of support with those participated in the online open house with sixty-five percent. Showing support. And one important thing to note is that these were strategies that needed to be community led. And based on all the comments that we received. It's clear that we needed to be a little bit clearer about what community led means. Which is things that community members can choose to do. If it meets their lifestyle needs, if it feels accessible to them and that. So we did receive quite a few comments about like, what does community led mean? Or even the city is maybe telling us to do things that don't feel right for my lifestyle choices. So the biggest thing that came out of those types of comments was just the idea that we're trying to recommend that people eat less meat. People really felt strongly about that and they love their meat. And so I just wanted to point that out, there were a lot of comments about it. That said, not everybody was opposed to eating more veggies. We saw some comments asking for more vegetable gardens at schools to help supply cafeterias. An interest in growing and raising more food, including more home gardens and even livestock like chickens. And finally, there were a lot of comments showing support for a local farmer's market. Other interests included community rentals and fix-it fairs. And expanding on our composting and recycling options. Especially for apartments and condos. There were a lot of comments just about like, just generally throughout all these topics, making sure that people who rent are also able to. Take advantage of some of these options. And so there were also some comments about wanting more community composting sites. And an interest in drop-off locations for certain materials.
All right, so this gets to that repair thing again. If everything could be perfect, you would buy something used, hopefully in good repair, or you'd get it repaired. And then if you couldn't do that, ideally you'd buy something durable. And if you couldn't do that, you'd buy something made from recycled content. And then you'd get into the what do you do with it when you're done with it? But really that keeping stuff in use and making good use of stuff that's well made and repairing it. Is really the most important part of the story. Yes, it's enormously important to recycle to provide the material to displace the virgin material. But really if we could hang on to what we have long enough, with the exception of a few things like the really old refrigerator. Which is great for the beer fridge in the garage, but it's just always going to be an energy hog. Really, you're trying to just hold on and maintain things. And then when you buy something, if it uses energy, you try and make sure it's efficient. But that top piece, buy less. Either because you don't need it in the first place or fix it so you don't have to go buy it again. All of that's kind of, it's kind of common sense old thriftiness, you know? Just don't waste. All right, next slide. That's what you do when you have it and it's time to get rid of it. Ideally, it'd get repaired by somebody else and somebody else could use it or you're recycling, composting, et cetera. The energy recovery thing, I think you're only going to see that with organics in this region. Other folks do incinerate their trash after they do the recycling. Marion County, which has an incinerator ironically has, or maybe not ironically. Has the highest recycling rate in the state. And that's because they have monies from that incineration paying for their recycling system. And they have the best recovery in the state. Next slide. All right, back to you.
Thank you. All right, yeah, that brings us to the end here. So just before we dive into Q and A, just to reiterate next steps again. We'll finalize the plan based on feedback both from the community via the online open house. And from you all, I just want to make it very clear that it is still a draft and we are still able to edit it. So if there are things that you would like to see changed, please do let us know. After it's finalized, we'll bring it back, of course, for adoption. And then once it's adopted, we can begin implementation, which will include some prioritization work, work planning and resource allocation. And with that, I'll hand it back to you, Mayor.
Thank you. Questions for the. For Manny or Josh or for Jessica? Castle Brooks.
Thank you very much for your presentation. I had a couple like bigger questions. One was when we're looking at the. What was the, it was metric tons of carbon dioxide energy, right?
Equivalent.
Equivalent.
I'm amazed that you can even express that unit, most people don't engage that unit.
I like that unit. Because that unit is the unit that we measure to show that we're either making progress or we're not making progress. So I think that unit's really important and I think that. And I think that when we decided to do the original inventory as a council, we had had that discussion in depth and really wanted to show the markers where we start and where we go, not only for, uh, our own satisfaction, but to communicate to the public and to communicate to funding possibilities, increase that. So, um, when you talk about, um, offsetting those, um, uh, metrics, um, can you explain a little bit how you?
Measure that?
Measure that unit, yeah, and come to that.
So, so that unit, uh, so CO2e, carbon dioxide equivalence, is all different kinds of greenhouse gases. And so, uh, scientists had to come up with a way to communicate the, the relative intensity or, uh, like how much does this affect the atmosphere? So since carbon dioxide is the vast majority of it, um, they looked at that and said, okay, we'll give that a unit of one. And anything that's more intense than that will be a multiple of that. And that's what the CO2e equivalence part is. So methane, depending on the source, depending on the science when, uh, that's measured, usually gets a number of twenty-eight to thirty-four times carbon dioxide. So methane, even though there's less of it, it's really intense. And that's why dairy manures, digesters and wastewater digesters really matter because it captures that gas and it uses it beneficially. Some of the refrigerants and the industrial process, uh, are up in the like twenty-five thousands, right? And so there are so many of these that are getting phased out globally. And those are, those are ones where you have to be very, very careful with them. And, uh, and so, uh, I brought up that styrofoam example because everybody knows you inject in that material some gas to make it fluff up. But there are some processes that release more than others. And those now are obligated to report. They're not regulated, that's coming soon. Oregon's a little bit behind, um, at least California on that one. But the, but the awareness is coming, the knowledge is coming. And also there's, um, I think it's called the Kengali Accord. But there is a global accord to deal with very intense refrigerants and processed gases specifically. They overlap about fifty percent with ozone depleters. So that regulation was already moving us in the right direction. And those kind of, that, that same group of chemicals now is being regulated for another reason, not just ozone, but also greenhouse gas reason. So when you do an offset project, it's literally anything that either avoids emissions that would have happened. Like if you had a, a dairy lagoon and it's open to the sky and then all of a sudden you cap it and you burn that gas, right there, that's an avoided set of emissions that would have been there. When you plant trees and it pulls it out of the sky and into the ground, that's another way of doing an offset. There are as many ways as you can imagine. Some of those go to, you know, wood stoves in people's houses, all the way on up to, you know, solar on schools. There are a bunch of different ways to offset it, but they don't arrive at the same cost. Some are really, really cheap and some are really, really expensive. An aerator on a faucet that has hot water running through it is the best, uh, greenhouse gas mitigator there is because it reduces your need for that hot water, which reduces the need for the energy to heat it. That's like a dollar a metric ton. Other ones are way off the charts for destruction. So it's kind of a mixed bag. So when you pick your offset projects, it could be at very different prices. And a lot of those prices are based on what it costs to make it happen or how cool it sounds. I know that's kind of a bummer, but people are more excited to do something that sounds good than something that's boring like, we're going to flare that gas at the landfill and you're going to see this little flame over there all the time. That's really cheap, but people don't get excited. Oh, I'm going to offset by, you know, paying for a flare. People don't get excited about it. So be aware of the high-priced charismatic offset. Go for the atmosphere first. If there's other things that you can get with that, great. Otherwise, the atmosphere is what matters first.
Okay. And then, um, and then my next question is, uh, when we, you did the measures for the traffic, you included also the incoming traffic for people that work here, not just the people that live here, right? My other question was, there's several, um, interventions that included ECO Trust? And I was just curious if this, if we already work with ECO Trust in the city?
Energy Trust or ECO Trust?
Or was it Energy Trust?
Energy Trust. Yeah, that's the one that serves all the utilities. Yeah, and they're, they're available to everybody and they're widely used. I don't know if the cities already use them, but they serve residential, commercial, industrial. So they get a portion of all the sales of energy go to just that. Did you want to answer that?
Uh, we have a partnership with them. We have used them for some things in the past, but not to their full potential. So we are continuing to explore how to build upon that.
Okay. Yeah, I'd be curious to hear from them and get to know them because we haven't seen them in here. And so I was curious about that organization and learning more about it. Um, and then finally, um, I keep thinking about strategies too. I know these were like a bucket of strategies, but when you talk about like getting excited about a flame, I think there is a way too to, you know, build awareness around something like that. Um, so I keep trying to look at what the most impact is for the way that we use our resources and think about this. Um, and it, just looking at the stuff, it looks like so much is about, um, it's about the buildings and about how we examine them. So I want to know more about what right, white roofs can do. Um, and, um, I think that's, I mean, I have a couple other things, but I think that's pretty much it. I also just want to say that the amount of information in the climate action plan, I'm really proud of the work that you guys have done. It's, um, I talk about it at all the other committees that I go to because, um, I want people to think about it. And I worked with our parks director too on some ideas. And they already are thinking about like when we put in cement, how do we, um, do carbon offsets for funding? So there's all these ways that it can make our lives more efficient, not just, um, the, the health and safety and resiliency of our future. But I do think that that's such a big thing, like the report that came out about, how it costs billions more dollars now around, um, weather events than it used to. And, and like the mayor said, when do we ever run out of money with FEMA? So it's like, it's here, um, and we want everybody to be safe, um, and we want cool new stuff. Um, so, so I'm just curious about like the most bang for the buck, um, and what white roofs do and also how neat, I just want to thank you again for how neat the, the plan looks. It's colorful, it's engaging, and it's, um, got a lot of really great ideas.
I, I will say white roofs are taken off as a standard. Uh, if, if you fly over certain areas, you'll see the switch from black roofs to white roofs. But it, it saves, it saves an industrial facility or, or a big flat roof facility a lot of heating and cooling. Um, what would be most ideal? Um, weirdly, I used to be the chair of a white roof membrane company a year, a few years back. What we're hoping to do is get a photosensitive one where in the winter it would turn black to absorb heat. In the summer it'd turn white to reflect heat. That's the holy grail that everybody's trying to get to right now. But like in, in Alaska, you might want a black roof. In any hot climate, you want a white roof. Uh, but that is a, it's very cost-effective and it's, you know, cheaper than the tar roofs we've had in the past.
And, and more, more neighborhoods are going to be, more communities are going to be looking at ways to cool as the future goes. So even though today it might be rainy, um, we have to just think about how this is changing so quickly. Thanks.
Councilperson Pratt?
Well, first I want to thank you, um, specifically for addressing the negatives. Because as I read through it, I'm like, well, why didn't people?
Yeah, sure.
That was really nice to hear. Um, I, I'm going to start with my big, my big question is, um, as we move away from gas and fossil fuels and all this, we're, we're putting this huge burden on the electric grid. And you talked about solar and these, um, use of the methane. But will, will we be able to keep up with the, the huge demand that's coming as we make this switch?
There, there's a few things to know that are important. Um, so in two, two thousand eight, right before the economic like recession, we were about two percent away from maxing out the grid. And then we dropped twenty percent and we've been creeping back up. So the good news is that at night, the grid has about forty percent of it on dormant, unused. Cause we're mostly daytime creatures. That is the time where most of the EV charging occurs. So there's capacity there. The other important thing is when we switch from, uh, combustion engines to electric engines, they're more than three times efficient for taking energy and moving it into motion. So instead of needing te, uh, twelve X units of energy that we switch out gas and diesel onto the grid, we're really moving to four X. It's so much smaller, the amount of energy used. So that's anticipated to be about thirty percent of that forty percent of the capacity. So three-quarters of that capacity at night, when we're all charging EVs is supposed to fill that place. Now, what about daytime? So most people won't be charging during the daytime unless their duty cycle demands it, like maybe a bus. It runs its course, comes back, charges and then goes out. And that's a very intense energy load. What we have is solar to make room. And solar on, on this side of the meter, where it's providing most of what you're asking for, reduces the load on the whole grid because it's peak matched. When you've got everything going on in your building and you've got solar on top, if you don't have an industrial operation, it will take care of most of what you're asking for. So the grid doesn't need to deliver it for you. So if you don't have that though, then we'll bump right up against it. But what we do need over time is more rooftop solar because that deals with it at the place where it's asking for it, most of it. Does that help?
Yes, thank you. Um, and then I just have a few, like I guess, comments. And one was like Councilbrooks saying about the white roofs. So, um, and I know this thing is kind of a living document, but I want it open for, and the other thing that you guys didn't mention that I'm kind of curious about is like the electric hot water heaters are instant heat. So they're like located right at the source, so it's not pushing it through your whole house. But that this document, um, changes with the technologies as they come up. Um, the other is that, um, we consider the fact that, which you guys brought up on the EVs that, like, um, the people that have the least money are not able to go to buy the Energy Trust new appliance, you know? So that, that, that's just the case, that the people with the least money are going to be further behind in getting energy-efficient anythings. And then the last one is just that we, we look at different sections of this document. And my example is like, um, you talked about, um, density and we all kind of don't like it, but it's coming. And we're, we have a state mandate for it, so we don't even have a choice. And, but that as we do that, we, we mix that and look at other sections like urban forestry. And how can we make that, the greenness of it, like when you walk, that's what I think everybody loves about Toallatin, that you can see green or I can go, I have a nice ten-acre park right down the street or twenty-acre park. And there, there's green spaces. So as we build this density, we look at creative ways like maybe vertical gardens and other things to make it very, it's not only aesthetically pleasing, but it's like you said, it keeps it cooler. And it, I, I think it's, it's, it's good for your mental health actually to look at that instead of cement. So just that we're, um, thoughtful as we progress with this. And thank you for all your work on this.
Definitely, thank you.
Sure.
Can you also, as far as grid stability, it's one of the things I was thinking about as well. And I've gone to some things where some cities, um, were looking at, um, developing their own micro grids. Um, I just have concerns with stability of electricity because we power outages and things like that. So are there ways and that we can think about, um, increasing the stability and the resilience of our own grid in the city? Is that addressed in the plan?
Just, I'll, I'll be real brief on it. Mostly what we're seeing is just the, uh, like emergency command centers getting on solar and storage, just so they can operate their radios. Every time when we have that discussion though, what, what people don't know is there's about three days worth of fuel. So if you're talking about like an earthquake, right, you can't move equipment after a couple of days. But in a winter storm, that could be a big deal. And so for me, my answer is a wood stove in my house for when we lose power. But for others, it might be the gas fireplace. But again, a gas fireplace and a gas cooktop aren't where the major load is. It's heating all the air and the water. So you may want something, a carve-out or something for winter storms to keep everybody safe. But the other thing is if you weatherize, then you can hold heat so much better. And this is the thing that's hard to imagine, but the code really arrived in the nineteen nineties. So it's the older houses that are the ones we have to weatherize. If they're weatherized, you're better hotter or colder and then you don't have as much demand. But everybody should have some kind of backup heat.
Well, and I'm, I'm concerned actually more about heat waves.
Heat waves, oh.
That draws the power too.
Yeah, so, so, so that is at, that operates at the macro grid level and they can have rolling blackouts. But traditionally those were, hey, we're going to turn off the poor neighborhood. That's how it's gone. In those moments, you got to make sure that doesn't happen. And that you're very clear on who can survive, uh, a big event better. And it's the people in the shadier neighborhoods that are going to do better than the non-shady neighborhoods. Heat waves, I will also say that heat pumps do better with a, a lot less load to cool than a regular air conditioner. So all of that makes us safer, but if it goes down, it goes down, right? So that's why you'd hope for a better envelope if there's no power.
And those other things help offset using the grid as much?
You're trying to shave all that down with efficiency everywhere. But weatherization has a really important safety factor for everybody, not just a money saving.
Other questions, comments? Councilwoman?
Thank you very much. At the risk of being incredibly non-cerebral in this question compared to everything else that we've heard tonight. So I apologize and you're laughing already, so that's probably good. So I'm curious when we go back to what the community had said about the support for the walking, the, um, biking and walking and that sort of thing. And we talk about, and, and Councilor President, President Pratt brought up the enjoyment of walking in the greenery. But when we're really talking about, um, that, that to me is recreation, that isn't getting people in our community towards services. So can you maybe help me understand? But I mean, I don't see very many people in our community walking or riding on a bike to get groceries and things like that. So can you help me understand where that kind of all plays in this? Or is that just a completely different plan and I'm, again, in the wrong little ballpark at the moment?
So, yeah, I can take a stab at this. So I think, I think trails do have a, a part in the transportation system. I think historically they've been built in areas that don't lead from housing to services. But that is a choice. And in new development particularly, there's an opportunity to change that so that trails connect people from where they live to where they want to be and not just park to park or along a river. Uh, the Phantom Creek Trail, I think is a great example. That goes from Tigard up to Beaverton to southwest Portland. And aside from the Spring Water Corridor, it's one of the busiest trail networks and does have a decent amount of commuters on it. So I think there's a way to bring that in. But, um, I think what you're also describing is the lack of perceived safety of the existing facilities. And so while we have bike lanes or sidewalks, folk don't, folks don't feel safe using them. Whether it's because of the, the nature of how they're built or, you know, bike lanes just have a piece of paint between you and a car, that's not always the safest feeling. Or the sidewalk might be curb tight. Those things are uncomfortable for folks, they don't have a high confidence level. And, uh, far away from where they live. So like that neighborhood scale. So like that neighborhood-scale coffee shop, cafe, I think is a great example of. Maybe if it's a half a mile and you're on a neighborhood collector or you're on a neighborhood road, it feels a little bit safer. But going from the south end of town to Fred Meyer might be very intimidating. So I think just trying to, it's like a menu of options, and I think there's a multitude of ways to get at that to help people.
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to kind of point that out because I do think, I get that the transportation plan is separate than the climate plan and that we are very interconnected. And I think if we're not really thinking about how those zoning things and when going up matters in different places and that sort of thing. So I really appreciate that that was brought up. And then one other kind of interest, just thought that I had, again, non-very cerebral comparatively. But in other communities, have you seen, I mean, we've talked about the ongoing education need that is probably going to be part of this, or part of all of it? Or do you have best practices that you know from places in California and different things to help increase that? And I'm just curious about that process.
Do you want to start?
Why don't you start?
The thing I'd say is very specific in mailers. Like, if you can work with your utility, you know, electric utility and ETO, and say, inside of our community, we would, we will pay to have this insert on the bill. Or, hey, we'd like to see more from you, ETO, reaching out. What are all the tools you have? Because they have money just for this, right? That's why they exist. So I would engage both those two, but really keep the message where it lives. Don't bring all the messages all the time. You got to, you know, when you're at the farmer's market, maybe that's where you can talk about eating more vegetables, right? Really, it's keep it where it lives is the best practice. But what we've seen for anything like green power or whatever is it goes in the bill. Now, that can be an electronic system now, but that's where we're seeing success. And the easier you make it, the fewer number of clicks, the fewer number of envelopes you have to fill, the more likely it is to happen.
And I also think that we covered a lot of topics with the Climate Action Plan. And so I think as you start to move forward with some of these strategies, kind of like what Josh is saying, like, take them like kind of one at a time and reengage the public. And like, here are some of the opportunities. What are the things that are coming up for you? What makes you nervous? And have real meaningful conversation with the public about it. Because like, for example, when I read the comments about density, it was that there was kind of an assumption around density means high rises. But I think many of us are starting to learn that density doesn't necessarily mean that. It can mean some taller buildings along commercial strips, but it also could be like cute cottage clusters. And there's a lot of different options out there. And so, I mean, of course, the public involvement person is saying like, go talk to your community more. But I think that that's truly what really needs to happen is have more focused conversations with the public about what questions do they have about it. Because the more you engage, the more, I think it really needs to be a conversation.
Yeah, and it sounds like a community, just a common definition of what does density mean?
Absolutely.
And that sort of thing. Yeah, thank you. Thank you very much.
Counselor Reyes?
Thank you. Very, very informative and interesting. I just, and I come from the same, same, okay, I share the sentiment that Counselor Hillier say about not having like the most knowledge or expertise on this. But I do try my best to be an example to the community. So if I'm going to ask the community to do, to get solars, then I want to know what that is to have that in my house. So I did have a conversation on Friday about solar panels in my house. And this is just a comment of my experience. And it was, I consider myself probably someone that works and doesn't have all the means a lot of people might have in my community. So financially, and I'm talking about like, I could probably be on, you know, probably on that case where I have to look at every deal. I go to Walmart and I check deals, you know? That's the kind of person I am. So I had someone come and talk to me about solar panels. And it really was good to know what they were, what he was talking about, PGE and the renewals and how it will work. But it is expensive. I mean, we're talking about 20, he said, between $27,000 and $50,000, or $150,000. And also, like, the roof has a lot to do with what you're going to put in your house. I mean, I was like, oh, no, thank you. I'm just, you know, so I'm just kind of, I thought about, I was thinking about everything you were saying. And it seemed efficient in the end, but wow, how do we get someone to get to that point? That doesn't have the, I mean, it's really going to cost a lot of money. And in fact, he was saying that they are extending these, in California, they're extending for some of the neighborhoods that are not more, that are not as affluent. Give them more time to come through some energy process. And so I just feel like these are great suggestions and recommendations. But as a council, and I'm speaking to us, we also need to see the community and how much can we ask our community to do? And if we're going to implement certain things, to be the most example as we can. Like I said, I was, I don't even know if I can do it. I even told them, look, I'm sorry, I don't think I can do that, to this salesperson. Maybe later, maybe when my life changes a little bit more. But I just, I mean, what we're asking the community to do in some areas might be really, really hard for some people like me. And so I feel like they're a great example, they're great recommendations, suggestions. But I think we really have to be, when you say community-led, does that mean, like, in my mind, I'm thinking the definition of a community-led cannot be the city's demanding for you to do this. It's actually community-led, like, your neighbors are doing it and they're helping you. And I think that's where I feel we're going to get to a point where we're going to be much better as a community and also to the environment. So that's just my experience. He also mentioned that, he was talking, the gentleman that was talking about the solar panels. He said that there's some trees around my house that might cover the sun. And that also affects what, and how much energy I get. So that's another, when you were talking about the trees, I mean, do we have to remove trees in order for us to get sun? And so that's another consideration that I didn't even think about it when he was, I mean, at first I'm like, yeah, let's all get solar panels. And then I realized all the stuff that you have to do and the things you need. We are not in the same, we don't have a, when we compare to California, they're much sunnier than we are. So I think our comparison should be more like Seattle or, you know, more of like, you know, we're dark at 4 o'clock PM right now for the next six, seven months. So I think that those are the comparisons I look for. California is a lot sunnier and they, it doesn't even rain. But another thing that I, as I was talking to him, I asked him, so what kind of issues have you had? And I Googled problems with solar panels, and it was the roof, that was, the panels were installed incorrectly, leaks through the roof into the home. So there was a lot of problems. There were like $27,000 to start, and then all those issues about your roof. So those are things that we should consider. And I really, like I said, that was my experience as someone that was considering this to be better, to actually be an example to my community. I'm not sure what kind, what I'm asking. I'm just sharing my, as someone that is trying to do her best to be better for the environment.
I would say start where you can. I don't think you want to go out and tell everybody install solar now when you can't afford it. I think you do say, hey, you know that LED light bulb takes one watt instead of 100. And it's going to be there for 15 years instead of two and a half years, and it's three bucks. So I think you, I totally hear you, and I've been through all of this across my life. And I'd say, start where you can, make sure the message is aimed at the right group. And when you're talking to renters, you're not telling them about what it's like to fix up a single-family home if you're in an apartment building. So I think the message, the individual messages need to be tailored to the crowd. But there's something for everybody to do, and it doesn't mean you have to go borrow $100,000 to make it happen.
Thank you. I appreciate that. See, I just learned something. So I feel like education is super important. And I guess we're going to continue to learn as we grow into this. And, yeah, we're going through that whole process of changing things to make the environment better. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Counselor Sacco?
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. Counselor Reyes brought up a great point about just the cost of some of these improvements, which sparked something. I read about pace financing, and I don't know a lot about it. And I don't know if there's, if policymakers have to be involved in order, because I know it's only available in certain states at this point, I believe. And if looking at options like pace financing is something that policymakers can be involved in to get those things into our states and cities?
Pace financing has been kind of one of those things where it's essentially, it's a low-interest loan that's guaranteed by the public. So what I would say is get with ETO. Find out why they would think of...
ETO is Energy Trust of Oregon.
Sorry, again, Energy Trust. Thank you. Energy Trust of Oregon. They really are the experts on this kind of thing and the utility. It makes sense in some communities and in others, it really doesn't. I know in Los Angeles, it's had incredible success. But not just for solar, but also for efficiency. But again, efficiency first, solar second. It's like, you know, the solar's the dessert, and it's important, but first you got to have your veggies, which is insulation. Insulation's not real glamorous, but it does a lot of work.
And speaking of veggies, I did also want, just to bring up, I think I'd be remiss if the vegan sitting up here didn't bring up, just that I, you know, I know that, I hear you say that there was a lot of comments about people not wanting to give up their meat. But, you know, for me, it was, it was one educational session that changed my decision. And so I think that if we can, we can reach some people that are willing to change, that it's an immediate impact for those that, you know, can see the difference right away and make that change. So I'm all in support of any sort of meatless meetings, information that we can get out there, you know, I'm all for. Thank you.
Other questions for Counselor? Counselor Gonzalez?
Thank you for the time. I will say that in the last 11 years, I have put new windows in my home for energy conservation. I've added a water circulating system, my water heater, for conservation. We've just completed solar panels installation, you know, for conservation. I've removed my landscape for conservation. I've installed a smart controller for conservation. I've done all these things for conservation without the heavy hand of government, okay? Education is key. And so what I am looking for is let's clean up our house. We have a tree ordinance that's none. We haven't provided our Tuolotin residents with the proper credits. We're talking about all this money that you're throwing around. But no low-hanging fruit, no low-hanging fruit incentives. Irrigation controllers, credits can be done. Cities are doing it already. Cities are removing backflows from communities for credits, you know, to take the water backflows off. We're not doing that. We're not doing anything. But here, you're sitting here talking about this huge overarching cost on infrastructure when we can't even take the basic fundamentals, like landscaping here at our parks. We don't have two-wire systems, decoder systems, weather stations locally. We have nothing. We don't even have an incentive program. We don't have a tree program, you know? We have nothing. And here, we're talking about huge expenses now. The last 11 years, I've taken upon myself without the heavy-handed government. Sure, I'm in the environment. I'm in landscaping. I want a safe environment. But when you say that we have 328 people feedback and one quarter of them, we're kind of, so we have 27,000 people in Tuolotin, so I can say maybe we had 250 people feedback. It's just not enough. It's just not enough. You know, we talked about education, a lot of education on infringements of people, personal choice. You know, this would be one of those things that you take choice away. Now, on my own choice, I've made the investments to conserve on my own with education, which I fully support in providing those kinds of tools. Education comes from credits, smart controllers, water-wise toilets. There's just a whole bunch of stuff that we can do on the low-hanging fruit. It's just, just do that. But we're talking about this huge long-term goal. I would say that California is probably the most horrible example for me of personal freedom. They're anti-business, they're anti-choice, they're tax, they're people, to color. And you are here citing them as an example when they have a deep population going on in California. I would go with Councilman Reyes when she said, let's look at Seattle. Let's look at comparable market zones that can give us some examples of what more we can do for education. But everything we're talking about is cost, 100%. Who's going to pay for it? The government doesn't create anything, they just take. So who's going to pay for it? Tax dollars. I'll pay for my tax dollars for education, for credits, for irrigation, smart controls. I'll pay for those kind of things because those are substantial things here in our community. Sustainable, long-term, without any regulations or governments, government rules, money grabs, all these things that in time goes away because government eventually, money runs out and the programs end. Education I'm for. And we can take care of a lot of this stuff without a lot of this cost. We haven't done anything in our own city to incentivize change. I've done it on my own for education. More education, that'll help. So I would support that. I'm not fully against this whole plan. It's all great and all good and, you know, fresh air and clean water and like, it's tough. But there are things we can do right now that doesn't require this, you know, I don't know how many pages this is, which is not environmentally friendly, by the way, all this color, okay, that we can do right now. But we're not talking about that. As we go into the park bond that we're looking at, I'm really looking for conservation in our own parks. I'm looking for conservation in our own labor force here in pruning practices that require less resources. There's just a lot of things that we can do locally here. Carbon credits? I don't think so. If this city is going to pay for carbon credits for another place, I'd rather just pay to have trees replaced for our own residents here in Tuolotin. But let's first adopt a tree ordinance with trees that are sustainable long-term. That's what I'm interested in. All this stuff sounds great, but we have a lot of low-hanging fruit that we have not taken care of. So, thank you.
That's everyone, right? All right. Just a few things for me. Speaking of the credits, I think what frustrates people, as Counselor Gonzalez was just mentioning, when credits, money runs out. I think the federal government ran out of their credit for the EVs, so folks have stopped buying EVs. Those folks who need the credits versus the ones who have the money to buy the car no matter what, that's frustrating people. Same thing with filing for a credit from EcoTrust. What I would look forward to is, part of the education campaign is identifying where these credits are, if they're available, how to get them, and, you know, making it easy to apply and get the money. Half the battle is filling out this 10-page app to get $200 back. People aren't going to do it. You know, it should be a one-page app. Did you install it? Do you have a receipt? Done. But that's something we can handle, that's something we can't administer, but can certainly advocate for, to get these credits to folks who would then install the systems that Counselor Gonzalez is talking about. My, and this is nothing new, you know, EV vehicles all over the place. And now there's the concern about where all these lithium batteries going to go, the mining of lithium in, you know, places in Africa and stuff. Eventually, this is not the answer to me, lithium batteries, because that doesn't help the environment.
They're already getting replaced.
Yeah, they're already getting replaced. So, you know, hydrogen... So, you know, the hydrogen fuel cell, like you're saying, you know, we got this, the, the electric vehicle is a great thing, is a nice thing. But battery technology, not there yet. And I think a lot of people are sitting on the sidelines until it happens. I'm one of them. And one of the things I would do want to mention, I got to give a plug for a local company here, QPO, which is located over here on Herman Road. This is the gentleman who started PoWen. His technology is that you don't need to install the solar roof. That he will have a, something like, what he calls a solar battery, kind of like the Tesla battery, that trickle-charges overnight, and you run your house off that battery. There is no solar rate required at all, and it pays for itself in two years versus the fifteen years of a solar panel. That's a company right here in Tuolotin that's going to be opening soon, that's going to pioneer that technology. And finally, as far as trails, Councilor Hillier, I'm looking forward to remember the bond program. I'm going to have that trail that runs from Fred Meyer through our, you know, behind Orchard Pond to Sixty-Fifth and Browns Ferry. The people could actually take their bicycle from the Clackamas County City, ride their bike to Fred Meyer and be safe. That we are starting to get those trail systems that connect neighborhoods to commercial areas versus just, you know, around the riverfront. But we're running out of time. So anything else, but I'm looking forward to getting the final public feedback on the document, getting the final review, addressing some of the current, you know, concerns we had tonight. But Joshua, you had your hand up.
It's just about batteries.
Okay.
It's the question that I get everywhere. Lithium is important, but it's not everything. And now the CATL, C-A-T-L, the largest battery manufacturer in the world, which is in China, has moved away from a lithium base where it was ninety percent of the constituent. It's now less than five, and most of that is sodium or silicon. Because those are the mediums that are cheap and available. Sodium in particular. Wyoming and Utah have the largest stores of sodium in the world. I do believe that the lithium ion battery and the technology and the formulas that we know today are going to be not even discussed ten years from now. So watch that as a rapidly moving target. And also, the, the average EV cost in China is about five thousand dollars. Different expectations for what a vehicle needs to do, not the Teslas that are for sale there. But this is changing very quickly. So I don't think we will have that as a barrier long-term. I think it's on everybody's mind as a concern. The more we, we get this domestically, the better off I think we are. I, I can't remember the actual sum for the investment in mines in the US, but it's very large. And it's all folks betting on some part of this electrification. So hopefully, we'll see better chemistries really soon.
Well, a little bit TMI here. I'm vested, I've got stock in, what's it, ESG in Wilsonville with the sodium batteries. Their stock's not doing so well, but one day, get the word out. I got in early, got beat up, hopefully it bounces back. Because, as you mentioned, they're doing the sodium technology and it's starting to take off with their batteries. And they're right located in Wilsonville, so. Yep. Anything else?
So can you remind us when we'll be back, when you'll be back?
We haven't scheduled one yet, so maybe we can reconvene after this.
Early next year.
Early twenty-four, we'll be back, yeah.
Thank you, good to see you all.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you, everybody.
All right, so we've got about ten minutes left. So I'll probably, we'll do the roundtable after our council meeting. So I've got, Councilor Sacco, you up for the pledge of allegiance? All right. Any questions on the consent agenda? Any issues on the consent agenda tonight? All right, and we have no proclamations, nope. All right, so with that, I'll go ahead and close this work session. We'll reconvene for our regular council meeting at seven o'clock, so you get about a nine-minute break. So if you haven't eaten yet, go ahead and do so, or go potty or whatever you want to do. I'm going to talk to former Mayor Snyder, he's in the audience. With that, I'll go ahead and close this work session, we'll see you in about ten minutes.